Meeting is called to order. Everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
But everyone please remain standing. I'd like to ask Father Clifton to please come and give us a prayer.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Let us pray. We pray to the most gracious God of justice and mercy, giving you thanks for the gift of life and for the opportunity to come together as community. As people call to be mindfully concerned with the well-being of each person, we ask that you place in us the heart to be conveyors of your peace, the desire to be agents of your love, the means to be bestowers of your provision, and that you enable us to work together peaceably to accomplish these things in this our beloved city of Inkster. Once again, we ask your guidance, and we pray that it will guide and direct Byron, our mayor, Clarence, Sandra, Connie, Stephen, Timothy, and Kim, members of the city council, those who have been chosen to make decisions which affect our daily life. Guide them to be effective leaders and servants, and the servants your people in Inkster need. And in this capacity, help them see the humanity and dignity of every part of the citizenry, that even when we are joyful or sorrowful, when we act with mutuality and are of one accord, or even in those times of disagreement. We also pray the bestowal of at least the same sense of vision to all who may come before this meeting to speak. Help each and every one of us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill, and help us to speak with charity and restraint. May civility and the basic principles of good manners direct all conversation we will have with one another on this evening and in future days. Direct us to treat one another with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew in every citizen in Inkster a strength of your presence, a sense of your presence, and the joy of helping to build a community living peaceably, living according to your word, and being worthy of the human person. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in the goodness of your love. Let us all say, amen. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I don't know that I'm gonna stay 'cause I'm feeling a might bit poorly this evening. So you are a major contributor to our scouting camp. And so I would like to give you this t-shirt on behalf of the Cub Scout camp, and invite you and the members of the council to stop by either tomorrow or Wednesday for your little photo walk with these beautiful kids and to lend your guidance and knowledge to them. Thank you.
We'll see you tomorrow. Tend to work. Anytime, tend to work. Okay, all right, we have a roll call.
Mayor Nolan?
Present.
Councilwoman Watley?
Present.
Councilman Oden?
Present.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Present.
Councilwoman Howard is absent. Excuse me. Mayor Paul Tim Williams?
Present.
And Councilman Chisholm is absent. So we have five present and two absent. And we do have a four.
So we have to do approval of the agenda. We're taking off Mr. Smiley. He couldn't be here tonight. And we're gonna replace him with Jerome Bivens, everybody's favorite. EPS director. Hold on, not yet, not yet, not yet. So any other adjustment changes we need to make to the agenda? Additions, deletions?
Um, we gotta add F and G.
We're gonna hide those two votes? Do we have, yeah. So F, which one was first? Abdullah. Abdullah is F?
And Perry is, Camille Perry is second.
What's the other one?
Camille Perry.
Everybody got those two additions? We have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the add-ons?
Report. Properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. Presentation. Mr. Jerome Bivens. Come on up. Aren't you on vacation?
Yes, sir.
That's my father. Dedicated employee.
Yes, sir.
Great leadership. Good afternoon, mayor, council, department heads, viewing audience, audience here. I'm here to make some brief announcements, and then I'm gonna take my seat. First of all, I've gotten a lot of phone calls in my office about the brown containers. I'm gonna address that right now. If you still have a Republic brown container and you no longer want that container, you are to put it out the day of your trash. The day of your trash. Put a note on saying, "Take me, I no longer want it," and it will be removed. But you have to put a note on it. If you don't put a note on it, it'll be there when you come home. So I'm, I'm gonna say it again. If you wanna get rid of your Republic containers the day of your trash, put it out with your regular trash. You can put trash in it, but put a note on it saying, "Take me." Or "I no longer want this," and they will take it. Our new company will take it and destroy it right then and there. Okay? Secondly, I've been receiving a lot of calls since August 1st about the stature of moderate rain we've gotten in the last few weeks. My understanding, I was not here, but Saturday, my understanding that Michigan Avenue was like a river. It was flooded to that level. I need people to understand when we get that amount of rain, I don't care where you are, what part of the country you are. A system is built to only hold so much water. Once it reaches capacity, water comes out at its weakest point. And most times, it's in the street or it's in people's basements. But I understand this clearly. I or the city is not the cause of your basement backing up, nor the street flood. This is an act of God, which I have no control over. So let's be clear about that. Act of God the city has no control over. So we understand you're upset and you're angry because your basement backed up. But I say to you like this, under normal conditions, what your basement had backed up, and people had to say to me honestly, no. Well, when we get this amount of rain we've gotten in the last three weeks, I mean, I think August the 1st, we had four inches of rain. August the 6th, we got two inches of, three inches of rain in two hours. That's not normal. Saturday, from my understanding, like I said, Michigan Avenue was a river. So when we get that amount of rain, we're doing the best we can when we come out. But we gotta wait the stuff stop, subsiding, and then we can begin to pump water out because we can't do nothing when the system's full of the capacity. So that's all I wanted to say. If you have any questions or concern, feel free to call my office at 313-563-9774. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no public hearings, consent agenda. Everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from last meeting? Need to correct some stuff?
Just one thing. On its mayor and councils, it says from 3 to 5 p.m. to the car show, 2 to 7.
Oh, 3 to 7? Okay. 3 to 7 for the car show. Got it. Any other corrections? Okay.
I thought that was a little early.
All right, do we have a motion?
I so moved. Moved to accept the amendments printed with one correction.
Report. Properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. Boards and commissions.
Chair? Would I commit a motion to appoint Mr. Mark Metz to the condemnation board?
Board. Properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, it's me.
I would like to move the appointment of Mr. Gabe Henderson to the Inkster Historical Commission. His paperwork is already on file.
Think we know him. Properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. Got any other, any motions? Yeah, that's what, yeah, so we need a motion though so we can discuss it.
Oh, you do, too, okay. So moved.
Okay. So the motion is to reappoint Chuck Coleman to the Commission on Aging. Report. Properly moved and supported, discussion? Anybody have any issues with Ms. Owens' interpretation of the city charter? Given that she's an expert, because she's on the Charter Committee, I guess we have to take her at our word. We have the discretion to veer away from the resident requirement if we so choose. Everybody knows Mr. Coleman, so there's no question as to his dedication to the city. That's not the issue. It's just that do we wanna veer away from the resident requirement?
Chair, I think that we should give this some thought because we've had, the past where we had members on boards, and when their time was up, they went to resurface again, we didn't come resurface again. I don't want this to seem like we're picking and choosing. Our charter does say if there's any kind of special circumstances that we can put them on, we'd like to look at that and see if there's any kind of steamrolling circumstances to make that happen.
I guess the circumstances, he is the chair of the board and does a lot of work, kind of the glue that holds it all together. Is that special circumstance? No, I mean, it's...
But we are.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Keeping that in mind, it is, according to what she read, our prerogative to do that type of thing.
Yes.
And so we can take each issue case by case
Yes.
and decide.
Mm-hmm.
If we have valid reasons for not doing it, then we don't. If we have valid reasons for doing it, then we do. And I think Ms. Owens was pretty succinct in her presentation.
Well, if we're going to move ahead with that, then we need to back up because there was a gentleman appointed to one of our commissions, and he is an Inkster native, not a resident now. But because he was not a resident at the time of his appointment, he was denied the seat.
I remember that.
So we must back up, and if that's going, that's gonna set a precedent. And we must look at it very carefully before we make decisions.
I don't remember which position it was, but yeah, we'd have to...
It was Parks and Rec Commission position.
Let's stay on this one. I mean, we would have to re-nominate, and then we'd have the same discussion about that person, whether it's a special circumstance.
Was the only reason he wasn't a relative, he wasn't a...
I know we didn't discuss anything else because he wasn't a resident.
Right.
We didn't even get into a discussion.
Right.
We didn't have this discussion about that person.
Well, I, I, I think that both situations now, I think it's something that we have to look at clearly because when you got somebody whose heart is into dealing with the city, city moving forward, they wanna be a part of it. I, I think we have to look hard at sitting at person because it's something that they're doing that they wanna do to benefit the city.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
It passes. All right, any other nominations of boards and commissions? Okay, we'll move on. New business.
Consider approving a, a request for a street closure of Norfolk between Meadowdale, August 31st, 2018, for a back-to-school party from 12 o'clock p.m. until 8 o'clock p.m. The applicant is Kevin Campbell.
We have a motion?
Uh, support.
And properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
Item B, consider approving to review acceptance of petition signatures to allow consideration of a pawn shop at 29230 Michigan Ave. Within 300 feet of residentially zoned land.
We have a motion?
This is the pawn shop, right?
Just for the signature acceptance. This is not us approving the pawn shop.
Petition signatures, so moved.
Report. And properly moved and supported, discussion? This is still in the books, we do have to deal with this.
No, I think we've already established us deciding on whether these indicated
Right.
not in our purview.
Yeah, out of our expertise. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes.
Item C, consider approving of a special land use for a proposed medical marijuana cultivation facility to be located in an existing building at 25907 Trow Bridge in the M1 Light Industrial District. With the conditions noted per the recommendation of the planning commission, the applicant is Regina Mama-Godis.
We have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
And properly moved and supported, discussion?
Question?
Yes.
Uh, my question is related to 70 feet, 35 feet, decreasing it. 70 feet, 35 feet. What, what was the reason such a change?
The condition, that's one of the conditions, Charlie? This went from 70 feet to 35 feet, was that the loading zone?
Loading zone.
Okay. What was the reason for the reduction in the size of the loading zone?
It said because they didn't have a truck that big.
What?
So it would only be as big as a U-Haul. They didn't need all that extra.
Okay.
That was the reason.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye?
I got a question. Okay, um... Here, it talks about being a, a marijuana cultivation center. And there's been discussion that there's gonna be processing, but this is not a processing center.
Cult, is it just cultivation? Just cultivation?
Okay, so for the people who are working there, just working to, for the cultivation, so there's no processing? Okay. Because there was a lot of discussion about that earlier.
It was.
Just wanna make sure that people understand this is not testing.
Okay, any other questions up here? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes.
Item D, consideration, consider approving to enter into a shared agreement with Hamtramck as part of the State of Michigan Department of Treasury Competitive Grant Assistance Program to prepare a joint residential target market analysis for Hamtramck and the city of Inkster.
So moved.
Report. And properly moved and supported, discussion?
I see where they're going to have staff that's going to be, whoever that, who gets the RFP, they're gonna have staff to, to look at this. Uh, will they also have the staff here as well?
They have to come here to do the analysis.
All right, spell that out, officer.
Anything else up here? Pretty clear, okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? Passes.
Consideration and approval of the sale of land to previous owners of the following foreclosed single-family residential properties. As duly noted, 26459 Morley, 28589 Parkwood, 610 Betty Lane, and 29924 Glenwood.
So moved, Mr. Chair?
Support.
And properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes.
Mayor may indicate that they one of the people that's on this home is being made available to him. Having to be a person that bear you with, part of our organization, therefore not voted.
Should abstain.
Abstain, well, abstain. I wouldn't say nay, but abstain.
Hey, right, right. Y'all not friends, don't move, buddy. Just so you know. Okay, that concludes the agenda items.
No, no. We got item...
Oh, that's too long, I'm sorry.
Item F is to vote in accordance with the vote that was taken in closed session for Abdullah, Abdala.
So moved?
Support.
And properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. But Sandra Wiley voted nay, just for y'all.
Item G is to vote in accordance with the vote that was taken in closed session, Camille Perry.
So moved, Mr. Chair?
Support.
And properly moved and supported twice, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. Glen County Commissioner Glenn Anderson, come on up. Tell us some good news. I saw you on TV the other day, you looking pretty good on there.
Thank you, thank you. My wife didn't say that. Just kidding. I, I just wanted to give you a quick update on a couple of things. On our August 9th meeting, the full commission approved an agreement between the city... Mayor, I know I gave you a call, that, between the city of Inkster and the county to split the cost of the western edge of, along Inkster Road of Colonial Park, to get a sidewalk there. And I think Mrs. Watley came, Councilwoman Watley, came to my coffee hour and brought that up. And I know Director Bivens has been on this from very early on, and I appreciate your help. And I know the county is, is going to split the cost. I would have liked us to pay the whole amount, but it was very difficult to get them to... Sometimes it's like, as the old saying, blood out of a rock, I guess. But, but anyway, the Ways and Means Committee that I serve on is currently reviewing the 2018, 2019 county budget. And it's expected the budget deliberations should be complete by early to mid September. We're meeting from two to three times a week on that, besides our regular committee meetings and that. But, so, that's all I have right now, tonight. Anyway, thank you.
Is it safe for us to drive on the bridges?
What's that?
Is it safe for us to drive on the bridges in Wayne County?
I tell you, it, if you go... What's scary is if you go underneath and you see the crumbling. In fact, someone sent me a message that their car was hit by a piece of concrete. Luckily, not a large piece, but still, they're gonna have to pay a deductible. I'm gonna recommend that they turn that into the county if anything like that happens. Just as a pothole, find out who has the responsibility for it. If it's the state or the county, then, then you can file a, a claim for it. Sometimes very difficult to get, but if you can prove that it's been reported before and they haven't done it, then you have a chance of collecting the money that you had to pay to repair your car. But anyway, wanted to say thank you especially to...
I have, I have a question. A couple of residents called, referenced the wall on Inkster Road, south of Michigan Avenue. And I guess it's being dismantled by some people. And they were trying to figure out who's responsible for repairing that. Now, I called Jay and I talked to him, and I'm sure he relayed that information to you. And he said, "You all were working on finding out whose responsibility it was." Has any progress been made in that area?
That I don't know, but I will find out. But I know I, I drove down there to find out, you know, exactly. I know Councilman Williams had called me, I believe, first about it, or told me about it. And, and I drove down myself because I really didn't understand exactly what it was until I went down and saw the wall. And they are, I mean, it's like, kids will be kids, you know, unfortunately. And, and so it looks like they're disassembling. What, what's real danger there is if, well, I don't wanna give my ideas, but if one winds up out in the street and a car hits it and causes them to have an accident, or they throw it at a car, you just don't know what'll happen, you know? Children, young people sometimes don't realize what damage something or danger it is to do something sometimes. But we're, we're gonna stay on it. In fact, we have that, that budget coming up for DPS. And even before then, I'm gonna, once again, I'm gonna try to talk to the director personally and, and find out. I'll find out from Jay too tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you. We will be on it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay, public participation. Michael Wells? Cancel that, Michael Wells. She rearranged you. Tony Bailey. She's always first.
Well, hello, Inkster. Mayor, council, city clerk, treasurer, city attorney, department heads, the audience and those who viewing. I'm up here to tell you about our cleanup for the month of August. It will be this Saturday. We'll meet up at the Booker Dozier at 9 a.m. I like to see a lot of different ones come out to help keep Inkster beautiful. Picking up litter. I will have trash bags and gloves. We'll have the dumpsters out. The four locations will be Lamont Park, Wheatley Park, Westwood Park, and at Booker Dozier. I also like to say different ones are taking advantage, the young people. I am giving out a community service certificate for those who need to gather up credit. So I like to see all the different ones out. Thank you.
Thank you. Alvin Hudson.
I've been waiting for her. Well, this is about the flooding over on Colgate in the basements. And I know somebody gonna say it's an act of God, but I sure like to tell God one time, "Well, come on up here, George, I need your help." If God owned a construction company, God didn't put those pipes in the ground. And then all that money went for the pumping station. then all that money went for the pumping station. That'd be hitting the button. But, all that money, all that money from the pump, for the pumping stations, and what seemed to be the problem, and I stood down there, watched them guys pull up roots out of there, so it's like somebody's not doing their job, sweeping the streets, they're supposed to do that, or snaking them drains out, and see where I live at now, when the water floods, it comes in my house, you know, and my back is hurting for helping people on Colgate cleaning out their basement. You know, carrying stuff, I got too old to be carrying stuff out the basement, and I'm just wondering, is there something to be done?
Man, I know we are cleaning out sewers, because I see the big trucks coming, and they, they suck out the sewers to clean them out, they're going neighborhood by neighborhood, so I know we are actively doing it.
They been...
See, but it's too late, because they should have been doing that all along, because I've been complaining for like, two or three years, about sweeping the streets and cleaning the sewers, and nothing's done.
You know, a lot of it is, is that we, us residents, sometimes put our grass clippings in the streets, we sweep our garage or blow our stuff out into the streets, and it gets clogged up in the sewer drain, so, part of that is really us, not you, obviously, but it's us, because I've...
And also, they have a truck to sweep the streets, you know, they don't even use that.
We have a truck.
We had contracted companies sweep our streets, our streets are swept, as I said to you when you came to my office.
It was a year ago, I seen one of those trucks.
No, no, they were just here a few months ago, sweeping the street, and to address your issue, the city, by federal and state regulations, are required to clean their sanitary sewers, the whole city on a five-year cycle. Every year, January fifteenth, I file a report with N D Q on what sewers I'm gonna clean that year, so we clean every sewer in this city. Yes, ma'am, I have to, I have to file it with the State of Michigan.
So, as far as compensation, what is gonna be done for that? Because, um, don't you have insurance? Or we can take it to your insurance company?
I mean, from the insurance side, the city is self-insured up to two million dollars. Big lawsuits we've had in the past, put us in a situation where we can't, we're not insured until we hit a two million dollar deductible.
That's about two million dollars, two blocks, the flood, is that what you're talking about?
No, no, what I'm saying is that, there's no insurance that's gonna pay, we have to, the city, us, we would have to pay anything up to two million dollars, so the residents, we pay any damage claim up to two million dollars, and then, insurance clicks in.
Okay, once again, what is gonna be done? I don't, you know, because it's a big loss over there.
A big what?
A big loss, L O S S, loss?
I mean...
People lost a lot.
I mean, but, I mean, I guess, what is gonna be done? If, if the city is negligent, like say the pumping station doesn't work, breaks down...
Didn't work, I heard it wasn't working. That's one thing.
If, if something is, if you flood as a result of our negligence, then we're liable. This is from our perspective. If, if it floods because it rains forty days and forty nights, or five inches in three hours, we can't control that, so we, we would have to compensate, you know how many streets flooded in the city of Inkster since August? We, we, we wouldn't be here, we'd be bankrupt, so we, we're not responsible for it raining hard, but if the equipment that we maintain malfunctions or we're negligent, then we are responsible.
But it was two blocks, two blocks, everybody's basement flooded, you know, what is the odds of that happening in the city of Inkster? Only two blocks?
It happened in other neighborhoods too, it wasn't just Colgate Street. Our phone was blowing up, a lot of people's basements flooded, and that rained, a lot of people, and I'm not saying that your basement, I'm sure yours did too, but a lot of people, it wasn't just Colgate Street.
Well, I probably have to get a petition, because I still don't believe, you know, that, um, they wasn't sweeping the streets, it was a lot of things they wasn't doing, you know, and I understand you only have eight employees, but you know, it's not right.
And I got a solution to the problem, take some of that marijuana money, and pay the people, and be done with it.
Pay who?
Pay who? Take some of the marijuana money, that the city, if you come back to the city, why not designate some of it to the flood areas?
That, we get taxes from it, that's gonna be a little while, talking about a couple of years before we get some tax money.
Yeah, take some of that money, pay, pay the people. You have better people.
Thank you. Do you, do you fill out a form? Gina Stewart? Do you want a form? Still fill it out.
Uh, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, Gina Wilson Stewart, I'm here from the Western Wayne County NAACP, and I just want to say, uh, thank you to the residents of Inkster for doing so well in last two weeks of election. A lot of things went in place to make sure the turnout was good, it was good throughout the state of Michigan, but I just wanted to say, uh, thank you to all the organizations that did partner with us to make it look like we did such a great job, but, you know, it's not over with, because of another election coming up in November, and we're gonna need the same type of partners to work with us, and to work throughout the city, so, after the meeting, if there's any organization that want to partner with us for, um, our next door knocking campaigns and phone banking, please see me after the meeting, and, because we got a lot of work to do. And lastly, um, at our last membership meeting, we talked about what do we do once the people are elected. There's a lot of issues going on, but we need to be able to hold them accountable, so we have the attorney, John Johnson, he's the executive director of the Michigan Legislative Black Caucus, he will be coming down to speak at our meeting, so that we can get some, um, definite plans and strategies on what to do to hold elected officials accountable, so we have an issue, you know how, you say what, what they gonna do, but we want to tell them what we want, and what we need, but we just don't want to tell them, we want to have a strategy, so at our next NAACP meeting, we're gonna have them come down, give us some ideas, we're gonna put our strategy together, and then we can, you know, starting next year when they take office, we can get started, making sure we get the things that we want for our communities. So, uh, the meeting is, thank you very much, the meeting is September tenth, seven o'clock, at Christian Faith Ministries, two seven five zero zero Marquette, in Garden City, and they last about an hour and a half, so seven to eight thirty, so please come out and join us.
Thank you. Talv Pauling?
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you know, I discussed some of this stuff, um, at the council, or the district meeting, and I have a couple of questions, um, I know we have city ordinance, but how many city ordinance employees do we have?
Ordinance code of?
Yes.
Three?
Three, and then, what exactly do they do? What exactly do they do?
Force the city code and ordinances.
Okay, because, like, we discussed prior, we have some properties, and you are well aware of some of them, they're not being kept up, and we've used the C Click Fix, called your office, I mean, multiple times, and, um, don't, the reason why I'm bringing this up is because, you know, we, where I live on Stowman, that first house, you know, you see that, and it's a representation, or it's the first impression of the block is that corner house, and when you see that, it makes the block look ugly, and it's just overgrown, the grass is overgrown, the weeds are growing out of the fence, the fence line where you can't even walk on the sidewalk, where you have, there's, they're starting to make a path on the grass now, so you can't even walk on the sidewalk, and, um, that's, I just, you know, just want the, and, and I, also, we have a lot of renters, which, I'm not being biased toward renters or anything like that, but it seem like the renters don't take care of their property as much as the homeowners, and if there's a way that the city can find the owners of those rental properties, you know?
I'm glad you actually brought that up, I did follow up, sent the address on Stowman to the code enforcement officer, but I haven't got back to her, hopefully she went by there today. And we talked about this Thursday night?
Yes.
And then I want you to talk to Ms. Ruggles, because I did follow up with her too, about you not getting a response from C Click Fix, because it goes to her computer, her desk, so I want to, I want to figure out what the problem is there, because when you send a complaint, and it's supposed to go to her, and to the proper department, and then when it's resolved, it's supposed to come back to her, and it comes back to you, that was the whole point of us having a system, so...
Right.
You would know that it's being addressed, and when it got addressed.
Right.
So I want to, I want you to talk to her tonight, if you can stay, we're almost done.
Okay.
Try to figure out what the problem is.
All right.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Gibson?
Mr. Mayor and Council members, I stand before you today, I know you've heard a lot about it, it's the flood on Colgate. My house has flooded, and flooded, and flooded out, and I know Mr. Jerome says that it is an act of God, and I know that the rain is an act of God, and maybe it's because we haven't been getting the rain like we have lately, and I understand all of that, but I also understand, I'm a widow now, my husband died in October of last year, and I'm an old lady, and I cannot continue to mop, 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 my kids decided today that they was not gonna clean the basement up from the rain the other day, because we were expecting more, so that means, every time it floods, all this stuff comes up, and I promise you, I am not lying to you, I have had my basement snaked, I've had it cambered, I've had the floor torn open with it, they, they don't even, the people that did it said, "Well, we only doing what we think now." That was twelve hundred dollars right there, I cannot continue to pay out money like this, for people to keep coming in, and this, they'll tell you, this is needed, that's needed, you're trying to do everything that you know how to do, because I am alone, I cannot continue to pay out this kind of money, and I do have the receipts, where I paid out, and I've done all of these things, trying not to have this to continue, and if it continues, my house is gonna be full of mold, I'll have no choice but to leave out of it.
How many times has she has it flooded?
My house have flooded, I don't, I can't even tell you how many times my house has flooded. My house have flooded more than three times, she talking about three that she knows of.
Four tomorrow.
So every time it rains hard, your, your house?
My house floods, I've had Mr. Bud, uh...
Avery, Bud Avery?
Yeah, I think that's what he told me, and he called him, he's come out, and he's seen what the problem, he went, said that he was going out in, across the street, and looked at, I guess, the, um, yeah, and he said, "I had a problem." Water, he said, "Every time it rains, you, you been getting a flood," I said, "Yes, I have, and I have."
Did he tell you what the cause, other than the rain? Was the drain backed up, or?
It wasn't my, on me, it was, and even the other day, the environmental people came out, and he told me that they had looked, I guess, the city had lost the line or something, and he said that, that he couldn't see it, because he couldn't see anything but roots and debris.
In the drain?
So that, in the drain, the environmental people told me this, and then he says, "I can't see anything here, I'm gonna have to go down to the next, uh, drain, uh, whatever, and look through there to see if we could find it."
Now, those, what, what, environmental folks, were there, are folks working for the city?
The environmental people said the city had lost some kind of line, I guess they were trying to, uh, uh, alleviate the problem, but they lost their line, this is what the man told me, they lost their line, so they called the environmental people out to help them to see if they could find it, he was right in front of my house across the street, that's how I sit there and watched him, and when he got done, I called him over and asked him, "What is the, is really going on?"
Jerome, are you feeling, is this the grant we're, we're working on now with, uh... Okay, the United Resources, that's the environmental folks you're...
That's who I talked to.
So the, the sand, so the drain they're saying it was full of roots and stuff, they're cleaning it out? Did they already do that, did you see them actually cleaning it?
No.
Oh, they're doing it now?
He said that they were...
Okay.
So, it's, it's, it's a problem, it's...
So, do they have a general fund that they can help?
Who's that?
You.
Do, do we have a general fund?
Yeah.
We have a general fund? Oh, no, no, our general fund, we have a fund called the general fund, we pay the police officers, firefighters, we pay the city's bills out of, we don't have a fund set aside, uh, just for, you know, for damage done by flood, you know, we don't have a special fund for that, that's not in the budget, so that would have to come out, if, if there's any, if we're liable for anything, it'd have to come out of the general fund.
If you're liable?
If we're liable by negligence, and it causes your basement to...
Uh, Ms., excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I think we could really put this to bed, David, can you read, read this, uh, law, about flooded basements from Lansing, from the state, and referenced, okay, but there's a law, there's a law, it was passed. Because of twenty fourteen, the rain event we had in August of twenty fourteen.
Yeah, they'll not cut the mic off.
There's a law that was passed, because of the rain events, the enormous rain events we've been having, so, I guess at the next meeting, the attorney will read it to the public, for your hearing.
I just want to stop.
I think you clearly understand.
Right, right.
You know, I just want...
I, I agree with you, ma'am, but I, I can't stop the rain, like I explained...
I'm not asking, now, that was, look, that wasn't even necessary, I could not ask, I know that rain, I just said that the rain is an act of God, I'm talking about the things that's causing, I know the, the flood, isn't there some way, you said that something takes so much water, uh, whatever it is, and you say it's an overflow, what do you do with the overflow? Can you open the overflow so the rain don't keep the basement backed up?
That's our, that's our entire system, ma'am, that's the system for the whole city, once it's full of capacity, that's nothing I can do, that's, that's anywhere, once your system is full, these systems only build to hold so much water, when it's unusual, this is the repercussions. I, I can't...
But we, we got some serious problems, we gotta handle, because if, if the overflow doesn't help us, then what comes after that? That means every time it rains, my basement's gonna flood?
No, ma'am, because we don't have unusual rains like we've been having this month, every time.
All I can say, Mr. Mayor, is help, that's all I can say.
Well, you know, what we're gonna have to actually do is replace the infrastructure, that's, that's the bottom line, the whole city.
Get some money, what you said?
I said, we have to replace the infrastructure, um, we're creating a capital improvement program, streets, the sewer lines, everything, if we want to increase the capacity of what we can take, we're gonna have to replace the infrastructure, you know, that's, that's gonna be a...
So, is that in progress, or?
No, the, we're, we're creating the plan, to put it...
Oh, you created a plan?
Is that the three hundred thousand dollars?
Oh, no, no, that's gonna cost a couple hundred million, that's, to replace the whole city infrastructure, streets and sewers, storm drains, that's gonna be, because the city is old, and when, and the reason why we say it only can take so much, it was built, how many years ago? Yeah, I mean, this infrastructure is old, so...
Yeah.
That's why it can only take so much, so if we replace it and redo it, obviously we can build, put bigger pipes...
Can you start sweeping the streets, you know, like, you know, because it's cleaning it out, and...
I mean, we do, we do sweep the streets, so it's not enough, basically, what you, I mean, you saying we do sweep the streets, you saying we don't?
I said, don't, because it's helicopters, and then it rains, and they go down the drain, and, you know, maybe you can start doing something, make it cleaner.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's what we doing now with the environmental company, they're supposed to be cleaning the drains. Yeah.
This is true, they just doing certain, ears of certain time, because they were in my area a few weeks ago.
Right, they were in my area too.
That's why I asked, um, about putting those signs out, so people know, they hear that, she's the coming.
We'll do, we will do the best we can, but we're not done, I, I hear you, we're gonna do something.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Officer Lebo?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and residents.
Good evening.
So, I am here, I wanted to say a few things, we've had two pretty big events since our last council meeting, and there's National Night Out, and the Episcopal Uza, both were huge successes, I just want to say thank you to everybody who came out and attended, as well as all of our supporters and volunteers who helped make it happen, big events like this take, take a village to put together, and I just am incredibly appreciative, because I enjoyed myself greatly, and I can't wait to do it again next year. Now, these events I'm going to lift off are in order of, um, the date in which they're coming, our first one is this Wednesday, August twenty second, from ten AM to two PM, in the Inkster Police Department lobby, and it'll be the bake sale, the bake sale is what helps fund our movie nights, our National Night Outs, it, it gives money into the Community Relations Fund, so we can have events for our families and children, so please come out and support us, many of our baked goods are priced under a dollar, it is presented by the Inkster Commission on Aging, and the majority of them are home-baked, and very delicious, so please come on out, we will take orders, but get there early, because usually we sell out by noon, and I know it says it goes till two, but it rarely does, because we almost always sell out, you want to get your pound cake, you want to get your cracker toffee, you want to get your shortbread, you need to come early, all right, early. Next, that, the, this coming up Friday, August twenty fourth, eight thirty PM, will be the next movie night at the police department, we are showing Ferdinand and the Bull, and we'll be, also be giving out free popcorn, hot dogs, and snow cones, so come on out and join us, please bring a chair or blanket to sit on, because it does, our chairs fill up fast. The next event after that is Tuesday, August twenty eighth, that is from five to seven PM, on Pine Street and Lamone Gardens, it's at the corner of Pine and Kenwood, basically what is happening is Basketball Cop Foundation is coming in with the Michigan State Police and the Inkster Police Department, Basketball Cop Foundation is bringing with them two basketball hoops, we're going to set them up, we're going to play basketball with the kids, give out free ice cream, grill up some free food, after the event, the Basketball Cop Foundation is donating the basketball hoops to a local park in which they will be installed, so come on out, five to seven PM, Pine and Kenwood, all residents are welcome. Coffee with the Cop is coming up September twelfth at six thirty PM, it's going to be our evening session at Gracie C. Postaria, no agendas or speeches, it's just a ti, chance to sit down with your local police officers and discuss any concerns, questions, comments, and really brainstorming events in the city. Last but not least, the, who is for now, Saturday, September twenty second, is the Inkster Fuel-Injected Carnival. Saturday, September 22nd is the Inkster Fuel-Injected Carnival. What that is, a classic car and motorcycle show. We are partnering with ICAN and Councilwoman Wally. I know she likes me to say ICAN, but you know. So, we are actually taking registrations for people who want to put their vehicles or motor, vehicles of any kind into the show, as well as anyone who wants to be involved in any way, shape, or form. You can contact me at 313-400-5387. Thank you.
What's in this coffee?
Oh, I'm sorry, Coffee with the Cop, you said? 6:30 p.m., Gracie C. Postaria, September 12th. And that was my effort to talk slower.
Good job, good job, good job.
Thank you all.
Kevin Campbell? Campbell, Kevin Campbell? As for the North Black Party? Sherry Smith?
Hello, Mayor, hello, City Council. I am educated in nutrition, so I know a lot. But I just wanted to say, I live in Inkster Housing, and on the crossroads, crossroads are Moore Circle and Lehigh. There's very heavy traffic going on, loud music, screeching tires, cars going here and there and everywhere. My windows shake. I have called Inkster Police, men and women, and a few of them I do know, and they're doing a great job, but they need to do better. Before, they said, well, what's your name? I said, my name is Sherry. So, I try to make it, I'm trying to make us to come together as a team, you know, where, you know, I need to know, we can get together, like, you know, the Coffee with the Cop movies, so we can come together and we can talk and, you know, see what's going on in the environment and the neighborhood that we all live in. So, I am trying to befriend them and say, here, I'm, I'm for you guys, okay? But a few weeks ago, I had a call, and he said, well, what's your name? I said, my name is Sherry, and I'm connected to the City Council of Inkster. And I explained my situation with the loud music again. There's two apartments on the corner and on Lehigh and Moore, and there's a lot of traffic and stuff going on. And he said, okay, you know, he said, well, you, you, you cannot call 911, you have to call the non-emergency numbers. So, that's what I did. I called the non-emergency number. A few, I'd say about 10 minutes later, I was outside, and what I do, I plant my flowers. I sweep around my, my, my neighborhood. I'm very connected with all my neighbors. I buy them flowers, cards, candy, cookies, so I can stay connected, and we're a very tight community. We're very tight. And so, these two officers come up to my door, and I'm like, I'm like, well, thank you for coming out. And they're like, no, we're coming out to let you know you're doing the wrong thing. And I said, well, sir, what, what, what am, what am I doing wrong? He says, well, you're doing, you're doing it wrong, but the right way. You're trying to do it the right way, but the wrong way. And I said, well, sir, listen, I'm here for my neighborhood, I'm a citizen, I live here. And he says, well, next time you need to text. Don't call no more, just start texting. The police, the police station. He says, no more calling, you cannot call no more, you can only text.
Can you text a police station?
You can text no more.
So anyways, I kind of looked at him, I didn't want to laugh about this, but I said, well, what am I supposed to do when something happens? Just start texting.
I've never heard that before, so, I don't know. Community Relations Officer, please, you can have her after the meeting's over.
And can I just say one more thing too, police officers, while I'm here? I'm Sherry, this is me, okay? So, I have called.
That's fire chief.
I've called, okay, that's me. But what I'm trying to say is, I respect and honor all the officers, but at the same time, I, I need us to come together as a team because things are going wrong in the neighborhood where I live, Inkster Housing. And we have some, we have, we have, I have a great director here from Inkster Housing, he just started, and he's, he's a fabulous director here. I just want to, I just say thank God for him because we are, everybody is working together as a team, and everybody that got hired in in Inkster Housing is doing a fabulous, they're, they're doing the best they can with what they have. But we need to come together as a team. Officers cannot be against the citizens. You know, we, we gotta work together as a team. That's what I'm trying to say.
We agree.
Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you. Pastor Jean Overman?
Hi, guys.
Hello.
Thought I would run in.
Are you walking out?
And make a few announcements. So, yes, I am awake. We're having a Stay Lit Sunday at the Church for the Youth. So, we, at the amazing event the other day I hit to miss because I was training up at Adrian College, they gave out 500 light bulbs, so there were a lot of people at the event, which is awesome. And Nights Out was awesome, and we were able to give out light bulbs. But we want to share this information with the city. So, to Sunday, August 26th, 12 o'clock, the youth will be having, as we get lit and stay lit for Christ, it's going to be a lit service, so join us.
You're gonna get lit?
We're gonna get lit. That's a good thing for the House of God, right? A candle on a hill cannot be hid, right? And I'm also here on behalf of the Western Wayne County Branch of the NAACP. We're very excited, want to share this with our city first. A full-page ad in our program book, it's gonna be $500 this year. So, we want to get that first, Inkster. I know we're having a little financial issue as we talk about water, but if we all give $25, we can do it. Our guest speaker this year is Judge Greg Mathis. We asked that you save the date, it's Sunday, October 14th at 5:00 p.m. This year, the dinner's at the Woodlands of Van Buren Golf Course and on E Course Road in Wayne, Michigan. The cost is $50 per person, and there are sponsorships available. I do have all of that information that I will be sharing as we move forward towards the event. Again, I'm so extremely proud of the two events we just hosted. It was actually spoke about while I was up at Siena Heights, so we're getting around, good things are happening. We want to stay on the good path, Inkster. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Yvette Brock? You good? Will Miller? He said he good too? What y'all trying to say?
The truth is, get from over there. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
All right. My name is William Miller. I am the current president of the National Action Network Inkster, Western Wayne Branch. September 1st, we're gonna be having our general membership meeting. We're gonna be having current Democratic Fifth Senate District Elect Miss Betty Jean Alexander is gonna come out, have a conversation with us about her election in the primary. Detroit School Board Member Lamar Lemus is gonna be there as well. So, we're gonna have a conversation about what happened at this last election.
What time?
Normal time, 10:00 a.m. for our St. Clement's Episcopal Church, 4300 Harrison Street.
What day is that?
September 1st. Also, we're also gonna be reaching out to people. I don't know if anybody's seen it. There's been some viral videos about something that went down in the Westland just recently, police. I've had a lot of people approach me with regard to that incident, as well as several others, especially since I've been in this capacity. So, we're gonna have a conversation with folks, so if anybody within the sound of my voice has had any run-ins, detainments, arrests, questionings from the Westland Police Department, you can reach out to me. I'll go ahead and give you my phone number here, you can reach me here at 313-720-0186. We're also gonna be talking about this over the next couple of meetings, and reaching out to the, the administration of Westland and have a more in-depth conversation about it. Other than that, God bless y'all. The events of the last couple of days have been a whole lot of fun. The Episcopal Lusa was amazing, I was truly impressed by that. So, we gotta do more. All right, y'all have a good night.
All right, thank you. Michael Wales? Yeah, I'm sure, come on.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to give everybody a quick update on the library. And this most, I'm just gonna cover a couple of, just the new library and then the library's budget. Last week, the board did approve the site and floor plans for the library that we locate on 2500 Hamlin Boulevard. That's right behind the Fire Department. The total square footage is roughly 9,800 square feet, and that includes with the renovations and additions to the existing building that is there. The total estimated cost that we're projecting is about 1.8 million. That also includes the purchase price of the property along with renovations and things of that nature. With regard to the library's budget, we are caught up with our audits. We should be starting to audit for the fiscal year that just ended on June 30th to 2018. That should be starting really soon. I just want to let everybody know at the, and these figures are unaudited, but although we did have $104,000 deficit, which is the first time we had a deficit since the motion was passed in back November 2010, but that's because a lot of costs related to the, that's going into the new library and things of that nature. We still had a 2.1 million dollar fund balance for that, for the end of last fiscal year. We had a 2.1 million dollar fund balance. So, actually, when everything is all said and done, what we're projecting, when the fiscal year ends on June 30th of 2019, we are projecting to have a deficit of 1.5 million. However, because of the fund balance and health, healthy fund balance we have, we're projected that our ending fund balance would be about $645,000. Now, those figures could change because right now, the estimates, we have a construction manager, they'll have to go line by line item to determine, like, what the actual cost. So, these are just estimates just based on preliminary report, and that could change, and depending on what happens with the temporary library, things of that nature, staffing, or whatever else to go into it. So, just don't hold me to those figures, but so far, so good. So, I just wanted to make that announcement to everybody. Have a good night.
You want to tell them about the temporary library being open? Is it open?
Well, actually, I don't want to give y'all, we did approve hours last week, but there's a staffing issue right now, and I did get attention from the director today when I asked about it. I'm just not prepared to make a comment because I don't want to say and then make further adjustments, so.
I received a flyer saying that we're gonna open this week, and I, you want me to hold off?
I'm sorry, what's that?
I received a flyer saying it was gonna open this week. You want me to hold off on posting that on social media?
Yeah.
Oh, you did open? Okay. Okay.
All right.
I have just a quick, last Thursday, lady came and inquired about your hours and things of that nature because she took a book out of the library last Thursday. Showed it to me at the. So, it's not something that's carte blanche, it's just if you happen to be at the door.
They're open 12 to 4 as of today, until they get the staff, hire new staff. Okay. All right. Jevion Johnson?
Mayor, Council, Inkster family, just want to bring greetings on behalf of your state representative, Jewel Jones. First, personally, I would like to thank everyone for doing their civic duty on August 7th, greatly appreciated. Secondly, I want to let you all know that we're back on the battlefield in Lansing September 5th. That is when session does begin. There are no current legislative updates. Just know that we're, we're working hard for you guys. If you need us, give us a call. Again, the office number is 517-373-0849. Again, that's 517-373-0849. And across the nation, I just want to announce that next month is, I guess, National Infant Death Awareness Month. So, we encourage that everyone take the right precautions and protocols when it comes to taking care of their, their young ones, their little ones, whether that be making sure that they are laying in a crib, making sure that they land on their backs, making sure that they're not strangling themselves or harming themselves while they are in their cribs and laying down at night. So, I thank you for your time, and I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Morris Post?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I know rain is an act of God. Again, I'm going back there one more time. I just want to make sure that I understand everything that I'm trying to understand before I go any further with this. Now, you keep saying that if the capacity is full, okay, it's gotta back up, okay? But if the drains are full and it's sitting there, it's gotta go somewhere also. But you said the streets was clean. I've looked at the drains, unfortunately, I left my phone at home. And I can show you pictures of the drains where there's actually enough dirt and debris in there where grass has grown in them, okay? Now, secondly, I'm saying that I forgot how many drains it is between my, I'm in the middle street on Glenwood. There's five streets between Middle Belt and Henry Belt. I'm in the middle street. Right at my area gets hit the hardest. Now, I want to know, why is it that this block down here doesn't get hit at all? You go down another block, they don't get hit. But my block is hit, it was hit August the 1st, okay? And I didn't even get everything put back. And here, I just got hit again Saturday night, okay? And then I tried to, tried to clean some of the, some of the other, because it's normally rainwater, but this time it's getting worse. It's getting like a little bit blackness, now, that's, that's sewage, okay? Now, I'm trying to rinse the shit out, but the drain is, is, is trying to back up again because it's not going down. So, there's more than just something in between these drains. Like I said, some kind of debris, some kind of root, something. But nobody checks anything, and I know about the act of God and rain and all that and God help. But I'm saying enough is enough, and my, my basement, this is only August, and my basement has already at least backed up at least eight to 10 damn times. And I'm saying, there is a problem right here. Whether you think you're liable or not, somebody is, but it's just not just rainwater all the time. And I just want somebody just to come and look and just look down into the drain. You know, like I tried to call Saturday night, I called DPW whoever, I don't know, and he's saying that, well, we got somebody on the way. How you gonna tell me somebody on the way? I didn't even tell you my name and my address. Oh, well, maybe I must have, must have confused you with somebody else and thought you called early. I said, no, I'm calling right now for the first time. I was standing in the basement when the water was coming in, and I flew up there to call. Well, we got somebody on it. Come on now, I'm paying taxes. Something can be done, at least look at it. Give me some kind of explanation or something. But this, you know, act of God and the capacity is full, it could be full because it's backing up and it's saying it's full, but all of this right here is open to somebody else and stuff. But, but mine ain't going nowhere. And I, I'm just like this other woman, I did what I supposed to do. I've had everything checked. I mean, I bought a basement for a reason, and I want to utilize it. If I wanted to crawl, I'd have bought a crawl. So, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that it is, I mean, it's done went so far to the point that I can't even clean it no more. So, now I gotta call somebody again and again, and I'm with her again. I just retired. I can't keep affordin' this. So, I'm just asking somebody to please look into it, investigate. Don't just push it aside and say, oh, it's an act of God. No, this is not funny. Okay, but I'm saying there could be a problem there. It could be, it could be something that need to be replaced, some, some kind of in the, in the concrete in the sewer. It could be trebues, it could be anything. When it, when it flooded August the 1st, I went down there personally and cleaned the drains, both drains on east side of my street. When the rain came Saturday, I walked down there in the rain with my rain hat on. You see that my perm's gone? Walked down there, and I looked at both sides, it's flowing, but yet it's still, here's my basement, again. I hear something splash, splash. My dog is waving his doggone water. You know, I gotta go down there and get him out of there. I'm like, this is just, it's, it's really irritating. I mean, I, I'm really just, I just, and thank you for hearing me out. And I'm saying, please, again, 29970 Glenwood, and I walked down three to four houses down, not a drop.
Thank you. We will look at, we had a problem with Glenwood before. We had, we had another resident who came a couple of times about Glenwood. Okay, all right. We will address that. Thank you. All right, City Clerk?
As Ms. Gina Stewart said, Inkster did show up and show out for voting. Let's do it again in November, please. If you are interested in being an election inspector, please contact the City Clerk's Office at 313-563-9770. It is a paid position. Thank you.
Just wanted to remind the residents that the property tax deadline for summer taxes is approaching. That's August 34th, so we encourage you to get your property taxes in by that deadline to avoid any additional interest and penalty. If anyone needs a copy of their property tax bill, give us a call or come into City Hall, and we can give you a copy of that tax bill.
Councilwoman Wally?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would like to add my thanks to the residents of Inkster for their prowess in voting this time. It was really remarkable, and we need to keep that up because that's the only way our voices will be heard by other people if we put that vote to the test. So thank you, Inkster. The second thing I would like to talk about is a resident called in reference to some officers who assisted in unlocking a young lady's vehicle. He didn't have any name. He didn't have a date, and he didn't have anything. But he asked me to express his appreciation for how professional they were and how diligently they did their job. So you have some officers over there who are doing what they're supposed to do, and they have the residents' gratitude. That's that one. Second, the third thing is another resident said he would like to thank the city for them citing advanced recovery for the smell over on Princeton. Yeah, they said that they appreciate you all doing that, and it's been difficult so long. So they want you to continue to do your job. Okay. The next thing is that District 3 will have an advisory meeting this Thursday, the 23rd at 5:00 PM here at City Hall. It will be directly followed by an ICAN meeting at 6:00 PM here in the City Hall Chamber, Council Chamber. Also. Hang on. ICAN is having a cleanup on Pine Street. Now, I know you people that live over in that area see the toilets on the side of the street and the garbage piled up and everything. So we are sponsoring a cleanup on August the 30th. That's a Thursday from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And what we're going to do is clean Pine Street from Inkster Road to Harrison. And if we have the, and we will have the equipment, we'll have a dumpster, we'll also have an inloader to pick up the large items. ICAN will, as usual, provide the gloves, contractors' bags, and things of that nature. And we need assistance in the area. Now, Ms. Moore, Ms. Pope, Chief Carter. I'll need your assistance in handing out the flyers we hand out to people in that area that say, we're cleaning up in this area. Come help us. So I'd like you to get with me so we can pick a day to do that prior to cleanup, okay? And. I think that's it. How about that?
Thank you.
Enough. Thank you.
Councilwoman.
Car show.
Car show.
Car show.
Car show.
Oh, she did the car show. I can do the car show again, though. ICAN, the Police Department, F and R Automotive are sponsoring a car show. It's a fuel-injected carnival. Is that play on word? It's September 22nd. It'll be at Inkster and Michigan Avenue in the shopping center there. From 3:00 to 7:00 PM, we will have vendors, food vendors. We will have numerous cars, classic cars and motorcycles, and we want you to come out and enjoy it. This will be our first, hopefully, of many. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nolan. Nothing? What? You okay? Want me to call somebody? Wait for the next time. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Mitchell.
Okay, good evening, everyone. A few things here. First of all, commendations to the Inkster Police Department for the National Night Out event. It was wonderful. Lots of people, lots of good time, and lots of information available. So I'm looking forward to that next year. I would also like to thank the City of Inkster and everyone involved for this past weekend's Episcopal loser. The Inkster Task Force started what's called its Unity in the Community Initiative, and it's really working because if you had come, you would have seen all kinds of organizations present at the Episcopal loser. People helping out with the brides, people helping giving out the backpacks, people providing information at their tables, voter registration, just all kinds of wonderful things happening. So I do appreciate the people of the city and everyone involved, especially the Episcopal Diocese of Michigan that did step up and invite us to partner with them. I thought that was a wonderful thing. So we're looking forward to it next year, and I'm sure it'll be bigger. It was pretty big this year, and we were really pleased. The Inkster Community Block Club will meet on August 28th at 6:00 PM at the Woodson Community Center, which is located at 29115 Carlisle at Middle Belt. The focus for this evening is going to be learning about how to involve your community in Neighborhood Watch. There are a number of communities in our city that are involved in Neighborhood Watch, but in our area where the Inkster Community Block Club is, we're not involved, and we need to be involved. You, everyone, every meeting we have, someone comes and has a concern about people driving fast in the streets and noise and gunshots, et cetera. So hopefully, my community can begin to work with this program to see what we can do to stem the flow of those kind of negative actions in our city. I would like to invite anyone, and Tab, I was going to call you because you're Block Club. Please come out and join us if you are involved in Neighborhood Watch. We'd really like for you to come so you can tell us how you're doing it and how it works firsthand. And if you're interested, anyone in the city, just please come and join us. September 6th, District 6 meeting. I'm hoping to have it at Twin Towers at 6:00 PM. I will be firm with that date at our next meeting and probably by email. Which one? Twin Towers, District 6 meeting. 6:00. Uh, August 28th, 6:00. Woodson Community Center, which is located at Carlisle and Middle Belt. This be old Inkster Public Schools Administration Building.
That's it?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protip.
Thank you. Citizens that's west of Middle Belt on B Street, they're complaining about dumping again. So the dumping has continued over there. Now, what they asked me is, can we put a camera over there? Could we put a sign that says, no dumping? But basically, they need a camera because it's consistent over there. So if it's consistent, we put a camera over there, it would be more likely we'd catch someone over there. Also, there's dumping on Cherry Street. They started back to doing that right after we had to spring clean last month. A week later, they dumped mattresses, trash, and everything on that street over again. So these are areas that really need the attention of a camera, or we did put the signs up to let them know that if you're dumping, it's a $500 fine. District 1 advisory meeting will be September the 11th. It will be here in the Tiffa Room at 6:00 PM.
9/11. It's 9/11.
Okay. Okay, you're sitting in the Tiffa Room. Last week, the City Clerk and I, we had a meeting with the FAA. That number I've been giving you for the last couple of months, I guess we made enough noise. We're getting their attention now, but we need to continue to keep calling. For those who do not have the number, once again, number is 734-942-3222. Their email address is noise, N-O-I-S-E, at WCAAUS. And for the administration, Jerome, there's some lights out at Inkster Road and Carlisle. Streetlights. Darkened that area. I've been noticing for several weeks, and I figured it'll come back on, but the lights are still out. And I think there's another light that's, system called me, that's on Meadowdale. They've been waiting two months for a light to come back on. Yeah, when you discussed that last month, they did be emailed, but it's still not. Okay, but you have, we did discuss, you did email it last month, but it's still out. You emailed them a month prior to, it's been two months now.
It takes them anywhere from a month to respond, but if they're between there, they have an emergency or something. We fall down. The emergency takes pride, and so I'll check with Maya to see when she email them. You can follow the [inaudible]. And then they'll come out within a 30 days, and they might have another situation. It's take [inaudible].
Okay. And last but not least, Shoppingster.
Everybody talked about Episcopal loser. It was a great event, other than the dunk tank, which I was dunked, Mayor Protip was dunked, Mr. Carter did some illegal stuff. He was manipulating the equipment from behind. I almost drowned.
That's why I felt so many times.
Yeah, I almost drowned once. But it was a great event to see all the kids out, getting their backpacks, school supplies, and just having a ball. Those are the best bouncy houses I've ever seen, ever seen. I wanted to get in it so bad. But I do not make the weight requirements. Another great event on Saturday was Vikings versus the Bengals, Little League football. We had a great time. We ain't going to talk about that. Yeah, we had a great time. The kids had a ball. It was good to see all the families out. The whole city came out because that's both our football teams. So that was a great event.
Best score Vikings.
And I hope everybody has a safe Labor Day, and we'll see you the day after on Tuesday.
Vikings! You know he didn't want to talk about it.
It was three games. It was three games.
What's your favorite term?
We get a second time?
Support, support.
We move supporter discussion. All those favorites say aye. Aye, pose.